So I would like to call to order the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City School Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with section three-three-one-three-point-one-five of the Ohio Vice Code. Mr. Charnella, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boxler?
Present.
Mr. Oskus?
Here.
Mr. Vettori?
Here.
Mrs. Mensah?
Here.
Mrs. Baer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. This meeting's agenda is always available through our district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. And board members have had the opportunity to call our superintendent and treasurer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. On the agenda tonight, you're going to see an Agenda Item Three C for public comment. This portion of the meeting provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. The board will listen but will not directly answer or address questions posed today. They will be addressed during the President--Board President Q and A and next month's regular meeting. And if you have any questions, the way that we conduct our meetings is outlined in our policies. These can be found on the Board of Education tab on the district's website. With that, we'll now move on to our agenda. And Item Two A, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Item Two A, the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Oskus. Mr. Charnella, take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to Item Three A in our Community Engagement section. This is a presentation on Each Child Reads Grant, a preschool update, and SST four.
Well, I just would like to do some quick introductions if I may.
Oh, of course. I'm sorry.
I think it's important to be aware of the fact that the Willoughby Eastlake Preschool has been awarded and maintained a five-star rating through Step Up to Quality from the Ohio Department of Education for the last eight years, which is the highest rating you can receive. Additionally, programs in the state of Ohio in our preschool was one of only twenty-four out of one hundred and nineteen early childhood programs in Lake County with a five-star rating. So we're very proud of that, and our preschool staff demonstrates their commitment to students, and I'm looking to hear more about some of that, a piece of that, in our programming this evening. Presenters are Gina Kaverin, who is our Director of Curriculum, Camille Ritt, who is in charge of our preschool, and Eileen Bowers, who is our Director of Pupil Services. Additionally, Dr. Teresa Brown, who's the Director of the State Support Team, Region Four. Dr. Brown will discuss the role the state support team plays in supporting our students and the preschool programming. So without further ado, I think I see you, Gina.
I'm getting started.
It is yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And thank you very much to the board for allowing us to present tonight on what we've been doing with early literacy in the district. And so as Dr. Thompson said, Camille Ritt's going to join me up here as well as Dr. Brown. First of all, I wanted to share with you a little bit of what we've already done in our district with K-three literacy, a little bit of the history, and then where we're going to go in the future. Then we will have Dr. Brown share with us about the Each Child Reads Grant, which we're really excited that we were recently awarded by the Ohio Department of Education. And Camille will tell us a little bit about the preschool. First of all, everything that we do within the curriculum department is to support the mandates and policies that come out of the Ohio Department of Education. So as we're looking at instruction in the classrooms, we're always following Ohio's learning standards. The ODE created Ohio's plan to raise literacy achievement to make sure that districts across the state of Ohio were providing some very consistent instruction for all of our youngest learners. And two of the components of that include providing a quality preschool as well as the Ohio's Dyslexia Project, which is related to the Each Child Reads Grant that you will find out about this evening. So our district, when we're trying to focus on literacy achievement, we are also trying to align instruction across the district. A lot of times, you will hear that learners who start behind stay behind. Now, we know that all students progress at different rates. We have some students who excel. We have some students who struggle and need a little bit more support, and there are students who are right on grade level making their progress. What we want to try to do is to prevent reading failure as much as we can. So as if students are falling behind, we, of course, are going to provide some intervention. What we want to do is give them quality instruction at the outset so they have the skills that they need to be really competent readers. And so our focus is on really making sure that we are following the principles of the science behind reading, which you're going to hear a little bit more about, but providing a consistent equitable education and core instruction. And that means that if we have a student in second grade at Royal View, for example, and we have another student at any of our other elementary schools, that they all have access to the same quality materials and the same quality instruction from our teachers. So that's what consistency and equitable education means in our district. We are developing some teacher leaders and principal leaders in our building to help with this work, so it's really a collaborative effort. And we're also providing for opportunities for intervention and trying to find ways to increase parent involvement as well. So we started out by planting the seeds for learning with adults. So several years ago, we did some informal walkthroughs, and then we did formal walkthroughs with a consultant, our elementary principals, and our elementary assistant principals in each of the elementary buildings. We did monthly walkthroughs, and we were able to highlight some of the things that perhaps we needed to address a little bit more in our district. And as a result of that, and looking at data, providing some leadership training for our principals, as well as professional development for our teachers, we were able to go ahead several years before the state really pushed for this dyslexia project to start doing some things ahead of time to increase our student achievement. So we provided three days of science behind reading training for our K-through-three teachers. We also purchased Haggerty, which is a phonological awareness program that is taught in every K-three classroom in the district. So again, that lends itself to that equitable education, as well as phonics through our foundations program. And also, last year, we increased the decodable text that our teachers can use with our students. We also made an effort to make sure that our ELA blocks were honored in the district. And what that means is every K-to-two classroom has a one-hundred-and-twenty-minute English Language Arts block in every building, and our three-through-five classes have at least a ninety-minute block. We also focused more on writing, and we provided some professional development for reading and writing across the curriculum for grades two through twelve. You will hear a lot of acronyms in education. We talk about ODE, MTSS, OST. And so we also have another one, which is YSE, which is our local acronym for our multi-tiered system of support. And Y stands for WE, as in Willoughby Eastlake. We make sure that we instruct, we support students who need it, and we also provide enrichment. And so one of the things as part of this multi-tiered system of support is strengthening Tier One, if you see that on the slide at the top. That's our core instruction. And the basic belief is that if we provide a really strong core instruction in our district, that eighty percent of our students are going to be reading at grade level and performing at grade level. But we know that some students still need some help. And so Tier Two gives us an opportunity to provide them some intervention in Tier Two and Tier Three. So one of the things that we added this year is WIN time, W-I-N, which stands for What I Need Time. And in every elementary building, they have a thirty-minute block for WIN time. So after they have their core instruction, for those students who are identified as needing intervention or enrichment, there's a thirty-minute designated block for them to receive that during the school day. We also implemented that in our middle school this year. It's about a twenty-minute block in each of our middle schools. The other thing that we recognized is that we really are partners with our parents. And so several years ago, it was in two thousand and nineteen, so it was in the fall before the pandemic really started, we started a program called Read and Rise. And so this parent--this parent program was designed for parents of students from birth to age six. And so we brought them together for a series of three nights. We provided dinner for their families. And then we partnered with the library, the Willoughby Eastlake Public Library System, and they had a program for the children in a separate area, and then we had a program for the parents. And we really helped parents understand the importance of reading at home and listening and speaking and engaging with reading at home. And then we are going to bring--we stopped doing that because of COVID, unfortunately, but we're going to start doing that again next fall. It was one of our most popular programs when we did our survey afterwards. Another program that was really popular is Kids First Night, and we started that in two thousand and seventeen, and that is for incoming kindergarten families. So anyone who registers their kindergarten student to come to our school for kindergarten in April, they can choose any one of the Five Kids Nights programs that we have at our elementary schools. So again, the parents come, and they can bring their whole family. We have dinner for them, and the reason we do this is because those kindergarten students, when they come to kindergarten for the first time, a cafeteria can be really overwhelming for them. And so we have family dinner, and the students go through the cafeteria line with their parents. They pick up their tray. They get to eat in the cafeteria at the big tables. And then they go to classrooms, and the teachers play games with the parents and the kids and teach them how to play these learning games and reading activities, and then they get to take all those games home with them to play over the summer to help prepare for kindergarten readiness. We also want to thank Peterman because they provide a bus that night out in front of the school so that the kindergarten students can also get on and off the bus and know what it looks like. Because for most students going to kindergarten, that will be the first time on a bus. And I know when my twins were little and the first time they were trying to get on the bus, they were a little afraid of it because it was pretty daunting for them. But it's really a great parent program. We also--and I wanted to mention that one of the reasons that we wanted to do this program with Camille tonight is that we do a lot of partnerships with the preschool and school age. So our preschool teachers and our school age teachers work really well together. So they're partners in all these parent programs with us, and Camille's going to talk about the Book and a Bunny program when she speaks. We also, in our elementary schools to promote reading, we have one school, one book, and so each school chooses a book, and the entire school reads that book together. Now, that might sound a little strange because usually they're chapter books, and a kindergarten student, obviously, is just learning to read. But again, it brings in that parent piece because the parents will read that book aloud to their children at home and have those conversations, and then the children will do activities at school. Two years ago, we started a quarterly parent connections letter, and then also, just this month, we were chosen to be part of a cohort with the National Network of Partnership Schools, and we are doing that as a district with Thomas Jefferson and with Willowick Middle School. And so we're receiving some training through Johns Hopkins on how to increase parent involvement in our schools. So we're very, very excited about that, and hopefully, after we go through that training this year, we'll be able to provide you with a report on some of the other things that we're doing with that. So one of the main topics for tonight is to talk about the Each Child Reads Grant, which we were really fortunate to receive. It was just over sixty-nine thousand dollars. And so I'm going to introduce Dr. Teresa Brown, and she is going to talk with you about the grant and how we're going to use that in our district.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Gina. Hi, I'm Dr. Teresa Brown. I am the Director of State Support Team, Region Four. I'm also a proud graduate of Willoughby South High, so I am always glad to be able to come back to where my journey in education began. So Willoughby Eastlake was the--there were thirteen districts in the state of Ohio that were selected to receive the Each Child Reads Grant. Many applied. It was a pretty rigorous application process. And then two finalists from our region, South Lake and Joga County, were selected to be interviewed, and then Willoughby Eastlake was eventually chosen. Where this all came from was the dyslexia support laws that were passed last year, and we're just getting into the implementation phases of the now. So Ohio Department of Education was tasked with creating the Ohio Dyslexia Committee, and they had been developing a guidebook and how all--how this law is going to play out. Components of the law include screening all children for dyslexia. Starting next year, all kids K-two will be screened, and then from years after that, there'll be incoming kindergarteners, and then if students are showing any signs, parents have concerns or teachers have concerns, then a screening process will be put in place. Additionally, the laws look at, you know, what are the evidence-based practices that we're using to make sure that every child is receiving that quality Tier One instruction that Gina was just referring to and meeting the needs of all children, including students with dyslexia? And then looking at, you know, do we have training and proper certification for all teachers that work, teach reading, and being able to support students with dyslexia? So those are all components of the law. So the purpose of the grant was really to create a model site to be able to implement all the components of the law. And so as the state support team, one of our roles is to kind of partner with the district as they're going through this process. So we have a regional early literacy specialist. Her name is Jennifer Kuhn. She'll be working primarily with the team with the preschool, the kindergarten, first grade. And the first task that they have is to do a comprehensive needs assessment. So really, to meet with the teachers in the--in the schools that they're going to work with, it's going to be the preschool and Thomas Jefferson, and work with that team, actually with the teaching teams, to look at, you know, what are the--what are the tools we have in place? What are all, like, the assessments that we use? What are all the different curriculum that we use? And does it have all the components that we would want to make sure that all students are able to, you know, succeed? And looking at our students with disabilities, looking at our students with--who are at risk for reading failure, and making sure that, you know, we have that really strong Tier One so we know that our students would be successful. And so they're going to do that at the preschool level, at the kindergarten level, and the first grade level, just to look at what all the--whatever you have in place. And then from there, the district will determine what their needs are from there. Like, do we, you know, does our curriculum meet all the things that we need? Do our teachers need more training? What are all those components? So that will be like the next phase of the grant is to work on that professional development. And then--and then also looking at that multi-tiered system of support that Gina was just referring to. So, you know, do we have procedures in place for earlier identification for children with dyslexia and even all children with reading failure? So because really, good education for children with dyslexia is good education for all children. It meets the needs of all children. So we really want to make sure that we have a really strong, robust Tier One system. And then looking at if students need more intervention, what are those tiers that you have in place that that's Tier Two and Tier Three? So we also have one of our state support team consultants that's an early childhood specialist. We'll be working with Camille's team, and then we also have a special education consultant that will just help kind of making sure that we're looking at meeting the needs of all students. So we're going to have several of our state support team consultants, you know, supporting the district as they go through this process. And really, one, thinking about that readiness and fit. Why was Willoughby Eastlake chosen? Because all those things that Gina was just referring to, really outlining that in their grant application was really what made them stand above and beyond. Doing that initial work in the science of reading is just well beyond where a lot of the state is right now. We're all talking about it, but you guys have actually been doing it. So in that show that you were ready to engage in this work and, most importantly, be able to sustain it. And so that is why ultimately, Willoughby Eastlake was chosen, and I know our team is super excited to get to work and see what all that you're able to do. And the replication that you're going to do in all your buildings is really what's going to make this a really strong project and really show that, you know, again, the sustainability piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I ask-- I think the next slide does go a little further into some of the--
Oh.
This is just exactly like everything that they have to do for the grant. So looking at that MTSS system, so doing that comprehensive needs assessment, you also have the administrative staff that's going to be going through a lead for literacy training, which is going to help them be prepared to support implementation of all the early literacy activities, talking about those evidence-based practices, making sure that everyone has the training and support they need. Also, they're going to be, again, the literacy--the lead for literacy, which is going to help them support the BLT and TBT level work. The new kindergarten standards have just been--or in the process of being released, so they want the district to be piloting that and providing feedback, like action research, really, about how those standards are working out. And then looking at our students with disabilities, how are we determining how students are identified and going through that process? And then just looking at any other supports that are needed through that comprehensive needs assessment to make sure that, again, the district is ready to support all learners.
Thank you. I think one of the things I'm most excited about this grant is I have secured probably just over a million dollars in competitive grants before, but this is the first grant that I've written that didn't ask you, here's the money, tell me what you're going to do with it. This grant really was about what she said. They looked at what we've already done in the district to show that we have the capacity to do the next step, and then we get to serve as the model site and decide and determine what it is that we need to do next. So it's really exciting, and we appreciate your support and happy to have that support. So thank you very much for listening to what we've already been doing with early literacy school age. Now I'm going to turn it over to Camille, and she's going to share with you about our five-star preschool program.
Thanks. Okay, hi. Good evening. My name's Camille Ritt, and I am a Special Education Supervisor in the Willoughby Eastlake School District, and I also have the pleasure of serving as the Director of our Willoughby Eastlake Preschool. And if you know me well, it's typically something that I describe as my happy place. It's a place that I enjoy, that it brings great joy to our students, our staff, and our families. So thank you for having me this evening. The Willoughby Eastlake Preschool currently serves three-to-five-year-old children. Currently, our enrollment is at about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven students. Our enrollment is comprised of both students that are typically developing but also a great number of our students, our students that have been identified with a variety of special education needs. So we're about fifty-fifty in our enrollment. As Steve said, I'm really proud to reiterate what he did share with you, that our preschool program is a five-star program. It has been a five-star program for the last eight years. Each time we go through the application for those stars, it becomes a little more difficult. They ask us to do a little more work, so it's something we're very, very proud of. And again, as Steve indicated, we're one of twenty-four out of one hundred and nineteen programs in this county that has that five-star rating, which is that highest quality rating. Some of the factors that contribute to that quality programming are that we have highly-trained teachers, that we really have a focus on school readiness, we have a commitment to continuous improvement, and really, a focus on family engagement. In addition to striving to be a five-star program, the Willoughby Eastlake Preschool also prides itself in being an integral part of the Willoughby Eastlake School District. We have embraced the district's mission of improving student achievement by providing quality instruction, maximizing our students' time on task, and engaging in keeping our families and students first. We believe that even the smallest person can change the course of the future. So I do hope that you enjoy the pictures. The pictures in my presentation are pictures of our students engaged in highly motivating, hands-on types of activities, so we'll continue on. In terms of quality instruction, our preschool program implements a research-based comprehensive curriculum that is aligned not only with our early learning and development standards but also to our state and our district assessments. Our staff at the preschool utilizes our child assessment results in order to make informed instructional decisions and to evaluate the progress of our students. In the last two years, our focus has really been on our pre-literacy skills as well as on the social-emotional development of our students. In terms of our focus for literacy, it has been our intention to expose our preschool students to the things that they are going to be exposed to when they go onto kindergarten. Gina and I work very closely together, and so at the preschool, they are currently exposed to foundations, phonics in motion, Haggerty, and to the Sunde program, which is new to the district. This is in an effort to really emphasize their phonological and phonemic awareness and really to get them to be prepared to be good readers. As Gina indicated, we focus on putting books in the hands of our students. We have a lot of different district as well as program initiatives. At the district level, Gina talked about Book and a Bunny. That, of course, is kind of tied to our spring break and to the Easter holiday, but each one of our students receives a bunny and a book, and that goes home to their families.
Not a real bunny, right?
We do have a teacher who is a real animal lover, and she does bring her bunny, but it goes home with her.
It's the one real bunny sent home, that's all.
We've also done a stocking and a story, so that happens at the winter holiday. Almost all of our classrooms have their own library, and our students take a book home each week to share with their families. And we've also had some initiatives where--with some generous donations that we've been able to do a book a month with our students, which I think is really, really important for them to have that opportunity to read with their families at home.
And if I can mention also, Camille, with the Book and a Bunny program, we started with high school athletes from North High and South High. They come over and they read a story to the preschoolers first. That's expanded to a whole group of different students from both high schools, but they actually come over to the preschool right before spring break. They read a story to the students and hand them their bags with their books and their bunnies. So the kids love having those older kids come over, and the high school kids, they're begging us, can we come back next year? We want to do it again. So again, it's a great partnership with the high schools and preschools.
And they really look forward to it. We have a lot of high school boys that come, and our teachers are all females for the most part. There's one here supporting me today, I thank her, but the boys just really, you know, gravitate to them, and they're super comfortable. They have a ton of fun with the kids, and again, it's just really about putting books in the hands of our students. Okay, in terms of the social-emotional development of our students, our program is implementing Early Childhood PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Our focus is on the three Bs of be respectful, be responsible, and be ready to learn. It's very developmentally appropriate. It really is incrementally teaching expected behavior across different activities, across different areas in the building. It really reduces challenging behaviors, and it also gives them an opportunity to share that information with our families in order to really support their child's social-emotional development at home. It's very often that they'll say, you know, these are some of the things that we're dealing with at home. How are you handling these things at school? How can we be consistent in being able to do those things that you guys are demonstrating some real success? So it really opens that conversation between the two entities, and sometimes we learn a great deal, too, just about what's going on at home and sometimes even some things that are working there that maybe are not working at school. So it's kind of a two-way communication for our families. In terms of time on task, our teachers spend a great deal of time planning, intentionally planning activities. We are only at school for ten hours a week at the preschool, so every minute of the time, as soon as they get off the bus until they're getting back on the bus or into their cars, we try to make every minute count while they're there. We do have some whole group instruction that, to the amount that is developmentally appropriate at the preschool, about ten, maybe fifteen minutes at a time, but really, our instruction is done in a small group or very individualized instructions depending on the needs of our students. All of our activities are very hands-on, engaging, authentic, and very developmentally appropriate. I want our students to be coming to school and learning by doing and just really enjoying everything that they're exposed to while they're there. But really, our instruction is done in a small group or very individualized instructions, depending on the needs of our students. All of our activities are very hands-on, engaging, authentic, and very developmentally appropriate. I want our students to be coming to school and learning by doing and just really enjoying everything that they're exposed to while they're there. Each year, and this is part of Step Up to Quality, our program is taxed with having our parents complete a survey about our climate and our programming. And based on those results, we try to look at what some of the needs and feedback that we receive from our students and their families. And some of the things that, out of that survey, we've really focused on, and that's engaging the community, opportunities for parent education and training, and also transportation for all of our students, which we've been doing for the last few years. In terms of our community partners, we've been really blessed, even with COVID. We currently work with our local fire and police departments, our local libraries, the farm park, Holden Arboretum, Heinens, you name it. If I call and say, what kind of creative thing can we work together? With a really, really open, coming in and making it developmentally appropriate for our students, and it really just adds to our curriculum and what we can expose our students to. In terms of parent education and training, we do this both at the whole group program, but also our classroom teachers will also engage their families in parent education, getting feedback from them again as to what they're struggling on and what we can do to help. We've been super creative with some make-and-take types of activities where parents will come in. The teachers assist them to make some visuals or supportive types of materials that they can use at home, and then they get to take those with them. And I think that's super meaningful. And the conversation that we have when we have those activities versus in a whole group is, you know, pays in dividends. Transportation, really, that was just the community, everyone's working. It was very difficult for parents, if their child was in daycare in the community, to get their child to a half-day preschool program. So our enrollment has definitely increased with our typically developing students as a result of that. We have about 50% to 60% of our students who come in on buses, so a really important piece. Gina talked a little bit about my next two slides, so I'm not going to reiterate too much. But what I want to stress is that our preschool staff and the kindergarten staff in all the buildings work hand-in-hand. We want our preschool students to be successful as they transition in kindergarten, whether that's exposing them to curriculum or going to each elementary school and being there when our students come. There's nothing that brings me more joy than when a child from my preschool goes, you're here! You're at my elementary school. And I'll say, yeah, of course I'm here, and so are your teachers. And when they go into the kindergarten classroom, which you know they're worried about, and the parents are really, you know, concerned about transition to kindergarten, and the preschool staff is there working hand-in-hand, it just creates a safe zone for everyone. So it's just a really, these are really feel-good events. Not being able to do these during COVID was unfortunate, so we're really happy that these will be back. So I did list the dates there. They're already out there. My parents are already aware and signed up, from what I understand, most of them, so that's really exciting.
If you know any parents of incoming kindergarten students, please let them know we have that program.
Exactly.
Signing them up.
And we also, as Gina had indicated, really partnered with the Read and Rise program. Many of my staff participated in that activity, so I'm not going to go into much detail there. Did want to share a little data with you. It's always good to see what kind of impact we're having on our students as they go on. And I think what's really important to point out again, these numbers here are from '17, '18, '18, '19. And I have a more recent slide that I'll go through. But at the very top, it indicates how many students from our program went on to kindergarten in our school district. And they were given an assessment at the very start of the school year called the Kindergarten Readiness Assessment. I also broke it down to how many students that went on without disabilities, as well as students with special education needs, and what our on-track percentage was. And you can see here, the total number of students, when you combine those numbers, we were about 75%. I would suggest that almost 90% to 95% of our typically developing students are going on on track. But I think what's really important to point out in this slide is the percentage of our students with disabilities that are also going into our elementary schools on track. So you can see, we were at 60%, about 49% the next year. And if you look at the numbers, they did, they were sort of heavy on students with special needs. Again, in 1920, even though we missed a portion of that school year, about 68% and 42%. And then last year, we had a little bit of a decline. I would be remiss to say that I didn't think that that was partially due to COVID. I'm very optimistic that with being in school, in-person, all school year, that that number will rise back up to that 70% to 75% that we're hoping for. So just in closing, at the Willoughby Eastlake preschool, I really believe strongly that by working together with our students and our family and the community, that we can continue to provide the high-quality programming that we have done for the last eight years and that that will have positive outcome for our students as they enter into our elementary buildings and then further on as they go through the district. So again, thank you so much for your time and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. You as well. While we have you, I had a few questions, just in general. Because my hope is that the community will watch this, and there's a lot of really good information here. You had used a term called "reading failure." Can you just provide a more lay term of what that looks like or maybe provide an example?
Yep. So one of the things that we try to do is provide students the skills so that they are able to read passages in a book, for example. And so we work on phonological awareness, which is really working on are the students recognizing that there are sounds associated with letters. And then phonics is connecting those sounds with the written print. And so when we talk about reading failure, it is, are they not reading on grade level? And so our goal is to make sure that at least 80% with core instruction, students are reading on grade level. Otherwise, then, it's not really so much reading failure, although that's a term that the state uses, but we want to prevent them from getting to that point where they can't read to learn. Does that make sense?
Completely. I just had another question for Dr. Brown. You had said that the preschool and TJ will serve as pilot sites and that we would then put together a timeline for replication. So what does that exactly mean?
So the part of the grant, the two sites that were targeted were the preschool and Thomas Jefferson's at K1. And then Gina's hope for sustainability would be to, once it is determined, like, what, all the professional development, did it work? What was needed? Did we have all the curricular components in place? Have they gone through? What the quality instruction looks like at each tier, how we're identifying kids? Once all the kinks have been worked out with the pilot site, then to replicate in all the elementary schools.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Did anyone else have any other questions? I figure while you're here, I'm going to maximize the impact.
One of the things to add on to what Dr. Brown said, so one of the things that we're starting this year as new is, I mentioned, a literacy support team. So each of the elementary buildings will have a literacy support team. That includes, for example, a regular education teacher, intervention specialist, Title I, as well as administrators from that building. And so Jennifer Kuhn, who's our literacy specialist for the Each Child Reads grant, she is actually starting on February 28th, I think, working with those literacy support teams. And so we're taking the information that we learned through these LEAF for Literacy components that we have to follow for the grant, and then she's going to share that information with our literacy support teams. So they're front-loaded, so that after we do the needs assessment at the preschool and TJ and we're ready to replicate that in the building, they're going to be ready to go ahead and start doing that, hopefully, next year. So again, it's building their capacity right alongside ours. So hopefully, we're not waiting years down the road to do that replication. We can start more immediately.
Wonderful. Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions? I really appreciate your time tonight, ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, let me move on to community engagement, item 3B, which is the Board President Q and A. And in our, this is going back, we've had a few meetings since January 24th. Mrs. McQuiggin asked a question with regards to Safe School and whether or not it has been downloaded to every child's phone or what the directive has been. And after reviewing with Dr. Thompson, Safe School not only is available on our website, but was provided to students at the beginning of the school year as well. So if they wanted to use and/or use Safe School for the purposes that it's put in place for, they have been informed and they have continuous access. And then, Dr. Thompson, we had a Mrs. Cantonese who addressed us at our special meeting on February 2nd regarding grades as well as an issue with bathrooms at North. Could you?
Sure. In terms of grades, I'm not really sure I understood what her question was. But in terms of bathrooms at North, that was part of a security decision, which has resulted in a significant reduction in fights that have occurred at North High School. So although it does provide, some of the bathrooms were closed. One bathroom in each wing was closed because we don't have enough staffing to post outside of each bathroom. Since we now have people staffed and one bathroom each closed, we've had no fights in bathrooms, which was the hottest point in our school, because it's the only place that's not camered, obviously. So it's been effective and maybe an inconvenience, but in my view, the inconvenience outweighs or does not outweigh the reduction in physical fights that we had seen.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Okay. Then we'll move on to community engagement, item 3C, Public Comment. Mr. Charnello, who was our first speaker?
Dale Fellows. Thank you, Madam President, the board members, Superintendent, the Treasurer, and fellow citizens and educators. I had the opportunity to be at your meeting last month where you swore in the new board members and that. And I thought it was something worth noting that, you know, you don't want to minimize the fact that they have been elected and you have all been elected. So I think it was a good thing to see some community engagement there from other people. And some elected officials that showed up, I thought should have been recognized. John Plesnik, who's our county commissioner, Chris Galloway, who's our county auditor, who did do one of the swearing-in ceremonies, and Chris Krainiak, who's the Eastlake City Councilwoman. So I thought it was worthy of noting that, but also to, again, reiterate the importance of having those ceremonies for people who are newly elected. Because it is a big deal to be elected. Some other things I thought I'd note in observing the meeting. I know you mentioned at one point a bullying policy, and I think that's something that the board can certainly set a tone on, as well as administration in their actions and the way they deal with each other. That would be a good thing. I did hear you talked about, from a practical standpoint, economics and American history. I was an econ major myself, and I thought it was interesting to see, to note that you had split those off to give some real emphasis on economics, which is great, and American history, which is my real passion, and to make sure that those are taught and given the emphasis that they should have. On a little bit of a lesser note, tonight, and I observed it at the last meeting, the Pledge of Allegiance is one of my little pet peeves as a longtime Boy Scout and others, that there actually is no pause and there's no comma between "one nation under God." It is one phrase. And if you look it up, you go to the Visitor Center in the Capitol, you'll see that there is no comma. So when you do the Pledge of Allegiance, that it should be "one nation under God," all in one phrase. And my last point, which is probably the most important, is I've been on numerous boards and commissions. I've had positions in the county as county commissioner and others where I've appointed many board members to boards. And this is something that I talk to board members all the time and make mention and reiterate to them as board members, is your role and responsibility. Your role and responsibility is to set the policies. Your role then becomes hiring the CEO and the administration to carry out your policies and then hold those people accountable for your policies. So I just wanted to reiterate that, because it's important, I think, across the county, as I've done this for many, many, many years, to other boards and commissions is just to make sure they remember what their roles and responsibilities are. Because after all, I've seen too many times where boards abdicate their roles and responsibilities to their CEO. And at that point, what do you need the board for? You just hire the CEO. So that was my final point. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Melissa Singer.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about school transportation, specifically morning bus number 56. We live on Fairway Glen, which is off of Lost Nation Boulevard. Since early November, morning pickup has been inconsistent. Communication was good in the beginning, but not so much anymore. If we do get a text or an email, it reads, and I quote, "maybe running late," end quote. Well, it either is or it isn't. Sometimes the text or email will read, and I quote, "10-plus minutes late," end quote. But we don't really know 10-plus minutes late from when? From the time that we were quoted when the school year started, which was 8:24, or the current time that the kids are being picked up, which is 8:40. Sometimes we don't even know what bus number will show up. And we always kind of make a joke, like, you know, it says Willoughby Eastlake, they're going to get to a school somewhere, just send them. But at the same time, it's not that funny for the safety of the children. We were told that this would be resolved when we returned from Thanksgiving break. There's actually, I think, 25-plus kids and 10 adults that are typically waiting in the morning for the bus pickup. On days that we don't get a text or an email, it's hard to plan. Are we planning for the pickup at 8:24 that was quoted at the beginning of the school year, and then we chance waiting outside until 8:40? Or do we plan for 8:40, because that's the time the bus has been coming, and then the kids miss the bus? And I understand that the challenge is staffing and call-offs, et cetera. But I was just hoping that maybe we could get an actual pickup time that will be adhered to for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa, what bus number was that?
56.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. To Bill. Do we have any other speakers?
That's it.
And then I have to omit a small error. I forgot to point out that our IT team put up our three-minute timer for us in the future. That was an oversight on my part. I was so excited it was there. So we will have the timer moving forward to keep time for all those who speak during public comment. Just so you can kind of keep track. It helped, right?
Okay. So we'll move on to item four, Board Discussion. Item A, the OSBA New Board Member Training 101. So one of the policies that our board has is that if any member of the board attends a training, they report back to the board. So if it's one person, two persons, et cetera, to share what was learned or discussed. And that is outlined in our policies as board members. So myself and Mr. Boxler did attend a Board Member 101 training, and it was two full days. A lot of information. And what we wanted to share with everyone tonight was just kind of a debrief of high-level points. Bill, did you want to start with maybe just a few things? That's okay.
Yeah. I have all of the handouts, and I will send all of the handouts to everybody through the Google Docs. There were a lot of good, there was a lot of really good things. One of the things that did come across that I would kind of like to see us talk about, maybe in the future, implement. One of the districts was saying that they had students come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd love to see it if we could get students to come and do that for us at the board meetings.
I think you've hit on a really important point at the meeting. There was a lot of collaboration between other boards, talking about how do they do what they do, how they do, why they do. And it was a great opportunity, especially as new board members, to just hear some different ideas, right? And different ways of reaching the same endpoint. I think one of the best things that I walked away with, what's the difference between board policy and district policy? And what do we as board members have a responsibility to do when writing and enforcing policy? Which seems like a fairly simplistic concept, but it's not. It's actually fairly complicated and really understanding what policies can change. It's actually fairly complicated and really understanding what policies can change, what can't change, what's Ohio Vice Code, what is OSBA or Neola policy, which is an interpretation of the Ohio Vice Code. I mean, it was very, very eye-opening. The one part that I also felt was really interesting, especially as a new Board member, they spent an extensive period of time discussing what the Board's responsibility was in evaluation of the Superintendent and Treasurer for our two direct reports. What does that summative assessment look like? What are the timelines to get it done? What should we do in relation to our policy? And I think it brings up an important point that as a Board, being so new, one of the things that OSBA or just other Board members in general said is the Boards typically do a retreat when there's a large shift or change in the Board members. And obviously, we have three new elected and Lawrence semi-new. John, being our seasoned Board member, was to schedule a retreat for us to all sit down and be able to review, what is our process? What's our strategic plan? How are we going to evaluate? What are we aligning to for that evaluation? So kind of wanted to plant a seed for future conversations in another meeting about trying to schedule a retreat for us as Board members so we can sit down and really understand what that role is and how we want to achieve and what goals we want to achieve within that process. So I think that was another great thing. There's a lot of other trainings, which I know in a previous meeting, a community member had asked. It is quite an expense. It's about $10,000 for the district for us to be a member of OSBA. There is a very large catalog of trainings, depending on your area of interest. So there's one very specific to levies and understanding levies and in-school finance. There's a series on that. So I feel as a new Board member that I would want to attend that so that I could better understand and have a more comprehensive conversation about our finances. So the last thing that I took away from the meeting was how, oops, was how some school boards have Superintendent and Treasurer-supported committees, which are not subject to the Ohio Meetings Law and/or Sunshine Law, per se. And then there's Board-sponsored committees, so those that are put together in public forums in which we meet and discuss different things. I know as Board members, it might be something to discuss in a future meeting is, do we as a Board want to have committees? And if so, what would those committees specifically address? And there was a lot of really great information on that, which will be shared by Mr. Boxler when he shares that, what is it, the PowerPoint with all the information?
Oh, PowerPoint.
Yeah. So all in all, it was a very well-rounded, informative meeting, and as a new Board member, I walked out feeling a lot more informed, so I think it was worthwhile.
Yeah, they covered a lot of the legislative stuff coming down the pike as well.
Yes. What questions do you guys have or what do you feel you'd want to know more about?
How did it compare to what we had with the ESC?
So, that's a great question. So if there's anything I could say with the ESC and to provide clarity, as Board members in advance of being sworn in within our policies, there are some things that occur to prepare us for the role. And part of that is a training that outlines a variety of different things, and Dr. Thompson and Mr. Charnello made those arrangements, and we had a great training with the ESC. And the ESC, I would say, was very policy-specific, and it was very much so our relationship with Dr. Thompson and Mr. Charnello and what their roles are. OSBA was boardmanship. I think it goes to what Mr. Fellows had said, as a Board, what do we do? Not just how we operate with those that report to us, but what are our, how can we spread our wings and fly? And really, what is boardmanship from the perspective of Board members? And I walked away feeling a lot more confident in my approach to the position, not just understanding the operational relationship that we have with our Superintendent and Treasurer. If that makes sense?
It does, yeah.
Yeah. So, okay. What else? So with that, we'll move on to item five, our minutes. And we have item A, we have the approval of minutes from our January 10th meeting of 2022. And do I hear a motion to approve item 5A, approval of minutes from January 10th, '22?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 5A, which is the motion to approve the minutes for the January 10th, 2022 meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Mr. Charnello, please take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item 5B, approval of minutes from January 24th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5B, approval of minutes from January 24th, '22?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 5B, the approval of minutes of January 24th, 2022.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Charnello, please take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item six, Treasurer's Report. Mr. Charnello, take it away.
Thank you. 6A, Financial Report for the month ended January 31st, 2022. I just want to hit on a couple of things. House Bill 110, I think I brought up every month for the last six months. It did go live in January, which we can see our revenues are more in line now with our estimated revenues. However, I did want to point out that a lot of these funds are more restricted than previous funds. So these are restricted for a specific purpose as opposed to the prior formula where these were just unrestricted. For example, restricted funds comprise career tech, gifted, English language learners, student wellness and success funds, and economic disadvantage. Previously, it was only career tech and economically disadvantaged students. So those expenditures need to be tied back to those revenues. So if they give you $100,000 for English language learners, you have to at least spend $100,000 for English language learners. So that is something different with this formula. It is more restrictive. It's going to take a little bit more work on the Treasurer's Office part to make sure that we tie down these expenditures to these revenue lines, but we've been working hard to make sure that we are tying those back for this school year because we didn't know really what, know what that would look like, and now we do. So we've been working on it. So on the financial report, you can't see that those new function codes are there now. So it's like 3211 down to like 3219. As far as expenditure lines, we're still in check and below our estimated amount. We're currently in line with last year. A comparison to fiscal year 20, which was two years ago, would not be a true comparison. This is partially due to the amount of COVID relief funds that we received the prior two years, and we also had a reduction in force in the summer of 2020. So all those factored in, I don't think it's a true comparison with two years ago, however, we are in line with where we were last year. And with the increase in inflation, we remain vigilant to keep our costs under control. As I've reported out a couple of times, you know, we're seeing a lot of increases in our utility bills and things of that nature, so all we can do is just, you know, stay diligent and keep our belt tight because inflation's coming. 6B, amended appropriations for fiscal year 2022. Most of these changes are for federal funds. These are the carry-out, carryover funds from last year. So whatever you don't spend the previous year, ODE will review, and if it falls within the carryover guidelines, they will reallocate them the next fiscal year, and they did, and now they're, they have to be appropriated. So that's why you see increases in our federal funds, which are 500-level funds. This is 6B, and it has a consent item. All right. This is 6C, Grant Application Acceptance. I have a couple points on each of these grants. The first one is the Berlin Family Educational Foundation. These were for South, NCI Willoughby, and North. These were awarded on behalf of the Berlin Family Educational Foundation, and these are from various teachers. Usually, they apply for these yearly. Some of the grants, these are grant names, I'm not going to name off the authors, but these are some of the grant names that were awarded. The NCI Car Club, Great Lakes Theater School Residency Program, Great Lakes Theater Residency, Berlin Family Education Foundation Teacher Grant, Great Lakes Theater Actors, Microscopes for the General Biology and Interventional Science, North and South Performing Arts Center Microphones, reinforcing J.J. Thomas's Discovery of the Electron, Continuing Education Coursework. And there's a couple more. So I just wanted to let you know that there were, there's just a bunch of grants that were awarded, and that's kind of what, those are detailed out, and those are by school. So that's why there's three of them. Second one, Rebel Family Staff. This one, the Rebel Family Grant, awards grants to support educators' efforts to close achievement gaps, develop creative learning opportunities for students, and enhance their own professional development. And then three, we have the Lakeland Foundation. This is for a fourth-grade classroom. It will introduce students to design thinking as well as inquire and investigatory practices. So just want to give you a little detail on what each of these applications or these grants are. 6D, Establishment of New Accounts. The pool and maintenance account is not per se new. It was always combined with the field house. However, digging into the agreement, the pool and the field house, where it should be split out, and they were always combined. So whenever we needed to actually spend the money from the pool account, they were commingled. They were put together. So we're now, we're just splitting them apart so we could actually use the money to upkeep the pool. And then the South High School Store Debt. This is, they requested a loan for an embroidery machine, and we said, we're not going to make you pay back the loan, but they wanted to pay back the loan. So it's like a teaching tool. We're creating a secondary account for that class, and whenever they say, okay, we're going to make our yearly debt payment, we're just going to move it over to their other accounts so the students don't see it in their primary account. In the secondary account, we will let them, like, equipment replacement or upkeep. So it'll go back into the South Store, however, for just an added layer of real-life business experience, they're going to actually see the money leave their account. So it's not, it's not really anything related, but we're creating a new account, so that's what's up for approval.
Are they doing like a profit and loss statement and kind of looking through each month and reconciling their books, kind of like they would be required to do for tax purposes?
And that's why they want to pay the loan back.
That's awesome.
It's pretty cool.
Okay.
6E, Purchase Orders and Blanket Certificates. We have two then-and-now certificates. One was the North Marching Band Camp Lunches. This is from over the summer. Somehow, the invoice got lost. I'm not sure what happened, but it showed up and it wasn't paid, so it's, it was from the summer, but the purchase order is now. So that's why it's a then-and-now. And then Boiler Repairs for Willoughby, Willow, oh, is it Willowick? This is Willowick Middle School.
This is Willowick, yeah.
Just due to the size of the boiler repairs, it exceeded the purchase order. So we needed the then-and-now to cover that. And then Blanket Certificates, $50,000 or more. So we have refund for direct loans for the money dispersed, NCI Eastlake, these would be for like the adult programs. And then Willow Transportation, this is transportation for our special, students with special needs. 6F, this is the Transfer of Funds to Make Debt Service Payments. So a majority of our Permanent Improvement Fund, Fund 003, goes to paying back debt. So as you can see, $2 million of that fund is going to the 002 Fund to pay back debt. 6G, Transfer of Funds to Correct the Original Posting. This is, as I mentioned earlier, we're moving it from the field house account over into the pool account.
And then Nick on that, do we, how do you separate what the Y covers or do we cover the?
That was all detailed out in the agreement between us, the Y, and the city.
Equal contribution into a sinking pool fund.
Gotcha.
6H is the transfer to the Termination of Benefits. This is where we would pay out our severance. So in January, there were severance payments made. It's about, I think, like 40%, 30%, and 30% the year after that. So after paying out those severance payments in January, the fund got low, so now we have to make a transfer from the general fund over into the Termination of Benefits Fund. 6I, Student Activity Accounts. These are just various budget changes or revisions. These are all usually student-driven accounts, so 007, 11, 19, 20, or 200. And then 6J, Gifts and Donations. We have a donation from the Catherine and Edward Lozick Foundation. They donated $14,000 to the NCI Willoughby Welding Program. This included toolboxes for students, uniforms, and operating supplies. And then the Willoughby Eastlake Public Library donated 233 books and 32 audiobooks for the elementary and middle schools. So thank you to those donors.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Charnello. We'll move on to item seven, Superintendent Resolution. Dr. Thompson?
Item A, for your consideration, this is our agreement with Lakeland Community College and Cuyahoga Community College so that we can offer our students the opportunity to take college-level courses on our campus without leaving our campus, and they're offered at both, of course, North and South High School. Primarily, our students go to Lakeland just for proximity. Some of the advantages of this program, students can take these courses and receive credit towards high school and obviously college simultaneously. One high school class is equal to three credit hours of college, which would be your typical if you're on semesters, one course. Students attending public Ohio colleges can use these credits towards their college requirements. So as long as a student goes to another state school in the state of Ohio, they must accept those college credit plus courses towards graduation at that institution. Some students graduating from Willoughby at Eastlake, both North and South High School, and it's actually a pretty surprising number, will graduate with both their high school diploma and an associate's degree simultaneously as a parent who's paid three different college bills. That's pretty significant down the road if you can knock out half of it. Of course, the downside of that is the district covers those expenses, and that's part of the Ohio Vice Code.
On the CCP, I just wanted to say, I personally attended the CCP meeting because my son's transitioning to high school. They did an excellent job of explaining everything and really helping parents understand what their students were walking into, being at a mature level content, being at college level, how to, it was a fabulous presentation and very well-done. So I walked away very informed, and even my son, who passively listens to everything, felt very informed as well. So kudos to those that put on those meetings.
Item B, for your consideration, is each year, the district calendar is submitted to the Board of Education, and that's developed through coordination between the administrative staff and the, and all the unions as we put that calendar together. So it reflects, obviously, union agreements. And item C is the Personnel Agenda. Each month, the changes in district personnel are required to be approved, of course, by the School Board, and they include for reasons such as retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts is generally the largest one that you'll see from sports season to sports season, and some of these payments made to people that may have worked in athletic events. So different workers, well, you'll also see them appear in the Personnel Agenda. So on this agenda, you'll see examples of all of those, all of the above.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. So we'll move on to item eight, Meeting Notifications. So we'll move on to item eight, Meeting Notification. So our next regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake Board of Education will be held on March 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at 35353 Curtis Boulevard and Eastlake. And then item nine is our Consent Calendar. And just a clarification, for all the items on our agenda that have a little asterisk before them, they fall to our Consent Calendar, meaning we vote on them all at once, to just be expedient with our meeting. So with item nine, Consent Calendar A, Adoption of Consent Calendar, do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 9A.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Oh, I cut you off, I'm sorry. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. And then discussion. Mr. Tarnello, please take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item 10, Other Business. We are going to adjourn to, oh, my gosh, Executive Session, and a motion to approve this to Executive Session is to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I hear a motion to approve item 9A, item 10A, Adjourn to Executive Session?
Madam President, I make a motion to, item 10A, to adjourn to Executive Session.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. And then just for consideration, we will not be taking any action after this Executive Session. We will go to Executive Session, come back, and adjourn the meeting. So if you'd like to stick around, you can, but there will be no action after the Executive Session. Mr. Tarnello, please take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
We adjourn to new Executive Session at 8:12 PM.